...order on December 8th at 6:00 PM at the Grafton Town Garage. Since we're still on the old rules, we haven't really changed them. Motion to adopt the agenda as...
There's...
Has some corrections?
Yeah, there's one thing.
All right, go ahead. Should be interim, not in turn.
Yeah.
On number eight. Also... Well, I have to tell you, that's a debatable thing. Because we went round and round and it could be either way, so that's okay. Kim and I did, but that's okay. But the real issue that I'd like to add is some discussion on the warrant. Warrant? The warrant for... I was gonna do that tomorrow.
That's called the warning.
I was gonna do that tomorrow.
That's the warning.
Men the warning.
We sign the warrants.
You want to do that tomorrow? We have the budget meeting, that's what I believe we're gonna do. But if you want to do it tonight, it's okay, but I wasn't prepared to do it tonight. The thing I was thinking about is some discussion on articles. Well, that's what I wanted to have at the budget meeting, okay? Okay, can we do that? Okay, it's fine.
The other thing is, I said to add the hydrants.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we should, we should.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No, the other thing is that the date of next meeting is actually a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, you're right, it is, but that's...
Okay, I'm just...
That's actually tomorrow's meeting. Sorry, we don't have adjournments tonight, sorry. Yeah, it is, but I... So where are we gonna add the hydrants? We'll just do it at the end before public comment, how's that, all right? All right, so any additions or corrections to the minutes? As presented? No, as presented.
Oh, you didn't add... You didn't add before you added the hydrants?
No, no, I'll talk about the minutes.
Oh, did we approve the agenda?
Don't we wanna adopt it? Well, adopt as...
Okay, go ahead, adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
So moved, yeah, okay. All favor? Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes of the seventh floor? If not, can we have a motion to accept the minutes of the seventh floor?
So moved.
All favor?
I abstain.
Okay, Danny, you have anything to report on the highways?
Depending on the weather. I got nothing else, nothing going on really.
Do plow's work very good?
Yeah, I don't complain at all.
Your truck works good, plow?
Want your second one?
Yeah.
I do have a question though.
Sure.
The last storm we had, you know, the eight inter or whatever it was, why our road so much better than everybody else's? The tar roads?
High powers.
Yeah, I mean, the salt melts off better, it's... Why? I'm curious. I mean, Rockingham, I was in Rochester, Townsend...
Every storm is different.
No, 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 I'm talking about...
That storm, the way I did it, because the temperature was so borderline, whether it's gonna pack down or not, we salted, we trickled a very small amount of salt, about every three to four hours, just to keep it working underneath. Sometimes it didn't, and then they gotta really put it down hard in the end because it packs down to a layer of ice and it takes twice as much salt to get it back off. So I mean, that storm is just, every four hours, we put a little bit of salt just in the middle and it works out. If it's really cold, I won't put anything until the end, because the snow's blowing around, it's not bonding to the road. It's easier to travel in snow than it is the sloppy, slushy stuff from the ice, you know, from the salt minks, so every storm is different.
I was just amazed, I mean, I was in five towns and our tar roads were so better than everybody else's.
We were here sixteen and a half hours that storm, just because of the timing. You know, if they come late at night and over early in the morning and get in, we usually leave as soon as we can. That one started, you know, just in the morning, all day long, and it was like, I don't know, six, seven o'clock that night and it finally stopped. We went out, cleaned everything, and then came in early the following morning and did the sanding, and we ended up getting like a dust in, so we ended up plowing it all again anyways. And we did have some truck problems during that storm. We had a hydraulic valve blow up, so I got to rebuild that in the middle of the storm.
On which truck?
The oldest one. One that was just put on from another company this summer and apparently they didn't get it tight, so it blew all the bearings out.
I have one question. The chips seal do the first time you plow, are they gonna loosen up some of that stuff?
You're gonna lose some of the stone.
Okay.
Can't wait until you lose most of it.
Yeah.
Because the salt don't work as good on it, because it holds pretty well. The stone is just to cover up the liquid tar basically when they spray it so it doesn't get on cars. It'd end up looking like 121 going down Rockingham to Saxon River, and then it'd be just like a blacktop road. But you're gonna lose a lot of stone this winter.
Because I know it's looked like a lot, had it loose on the surface, yeah.
Yep. And I kinda can't wait till we do lose some of it, so that the salt will go back working better. If you owe from any of the other blacktop roads in town to that one, that one will not be bare, but it's not slippery because it's so porous because of the stone. But the salt, you got salt all flamed, so it won't run because it's so porous. But the purpose of the stone is just really to keep you up off that liquid tar.
I was just wondering, because it just looked like a lot of stuff loosened up. I was just wondering how that whole thing was gonna hold up now.
Yes. As long as it doesn't peel off the rubber that's under it, we're good.
Good?
All right, I guess you are up.
Perfect timing.
Good timing.
Okay, I've been in touch with Sandy Alexander Schreiber, who's the attorney that I work with on tax sales. We have a property that's going through foreclosure with the bank, and I talked to Sandy about running a tax sale on this property, but I also sent him a paper that is unfiled in the town. I said, "I don't know legal stuff," but evidently it was foreclosure paper. And he thought originally he could talk to the woman at TD Bank. He said, "We may be able to just get the bank to sign off," but they didn't want to send us a check. They'd like us to hold off for maybe six months until the foreclosure process is done and then the bank would pay us the delinquent taxes on this property. And, let's see, let's try to think. Yeah, Sandy said that he's gonna be in touch with this guy's attorney plus the bank, and he's also going to add in an attorney fee of $225, but that will go under, there's a spot on the bill that says "other." Even though we're not going to tax sale, I talked to the league and they said that if it's part of the process, then we can put it under other fees and the bank will have to pay that as well, because it's a legal fee. So I guess I'm just asking you if you have any other feelings on this.
The penalty continues, right? And the bank is aware of that, as long as they hold off, the penalty still continues?
Yeah, and in fact, if it goes six months, they put it into a second year.
Okay, and they're aware of that?
They're aware of that.
Yeah, but the penalty doesn't get charged twice, it's the interest.
Well, whatever.
The penalty will get charged on the next year if it happens.
Oh, yeah.
Another penalty, but the interest continues.
The interest continues. Of the... Yeah, that's what I meant.
Well, there's really no downside, is there?
Not really. Except we have to wait six months, but we're getting really good interest.
Exactly. The bank has got it out there for them and I'm sure.
Right, yeah, I believe it's... Well, if they foreclose, they don't get good title until they pass.
That's right.
Yeah, I agree, I don't see any real downside to it.
And neither, but I just want you to be aware of it. Plus, I will be putting the $225 on this bill, and I don't know if I'm supposed to pass that by you as well when I put another fee in there of some sort, but that's what it's gonna be. He said he will cap it at $225.
I don't think... You do, but you have to do it, right?
Yeah, that's what I think too.
Pretty much, but just so you're aware of it.
Do we need a motion for this to...
I'm gonna think so, no, she's just... You do what you gotta do.
I just wanted you to be aware that I won't be running a tax sale. The other ones that were left were quite small and not a real consequence. Usually if we have a big one, we can throw a couple more small ones in there. So this one's gonna hold off. It was $6,500 total. And that's just for the one year. As I say, it's under foreclosure, so the bank has asked if we would hold off maybe six months or less, depends on how quickly it goes through.
And you were working with one that had a death, the owner died or something? That was a while ago, is that...
That one, I just got the payment on that one. So we've had, I think I had $20, about $2,500 come in just in the last week on some of those, and some are making payments now, so...
Good. Good, thank you.
Be aware of all this one, although this one, because I had talked to you about running a tax sale, and so it won't be...
Cemetery, do we have to sign something someday, or is that...
Uh, no, I can have to sign it.
Oh, wait, what happened? What happened, do we have to approve this or something?
No, I just... Just sign it, I think. Oh, I need a...
We're on right there.
I don't know if I need two or not, I go to the...
It seems like it means two of us.
Yeah.
You're the next one. Can I put the town hall roof and grant on the... Obviously, because we are in the winter and I don't know where we stand with the repairs, and the grant, we have not heard anything yet. State on that.
Well, I can... No, I have not heard anything from the grant. It was questionable on that portion of it, because that portion of the roof that we want to repair is on the newer section of the building, not on the original section. That is on the actual older historic register type of thing. So the other day, I've been in touch with Bill Badger and I drafted up a request for proposal so we can start getting proposals on doing that roof, hopefully by... It would be nice to get it done now, but we can't. If we can get it done by spring, so I did send a request for proposal to Bill Badger, who is the architect that we hired just to give us a direction and where we want to go with this. I was hoping I would hear back from him by today, so I would have something to give the board, but I have not gotten anything back. But we are sort of heading in that direction. Like I said, we are going out, we're gonna get proposals to do the roof, and if we can, we'll get it on the... For the town meeting, and we'll have a vote whether we can get the funds to do that roof.
You're saying you're getting proposals? I thought somebody has to draw up specs so that everybody...
I've already done a request for proposal, which includes the specs for it.
What is that? You have that?
Uh, Bill Badger has it.
Oh, he has?
And I was hoping again, I was hoping that I would get that back for this meeting. I could hand it out, but I have not heard back from him at this point.
But he does have it.
He does have it, and I was hoping to get back by... But I did not.
You want this as a warrant item for the town meeting?
Yes, that was kind of the plan.
So that'll have to decide tomorrow, or how late can we add something? We have some time.
We have some time.
And that's one of the things that... And Kim wanted to be there anyway, that's why I wanted to...
Yeah, I talked to Kim about it, we do have a little bit of time.
Alan, you have something you wanted to say?
Well, we can talk about it tomorrow, but what I was going to offer is for our pre-town meeting, I think it would be good maybe to have some kind of a PowerPoint or some kind of visual that people can see and understand what our thoughts are and the steps and the process, maybe some pictures of some of the problems, that sort of thing. And kind of use that opportunity as an educational, you know, so that when people come to vote, they have a better understanding of what we're talking about. And I'd be willing to work with you and Cynthia if you want. I mean, you've been the committee, but as far as putting the PowerPoint thing together, pictures of that sort of thing, we could put it together and then I'll just run it at the pre-town meeting and you can do the narrative or the talking.
That's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
That's a great idea. People don't understand the condition of the building.
Especially when you get up on that roof and see that wall. I mean, nobody knows how bad that is up there.
It's good, I wish... I'm hoping that it'll be... Anything else? Okay, the hiring timeline, the ad is in for replacement for the administrative town administrator of assistant. I don't recall the date, but it's... We have another week or two, but we have to think about reading the applications, setting meetings, you know, going through this whole thing. So I just want you to be thinking about this as we approach this year. The holidays are here, so it's not an easy time, but probably right after the first of the year, I guess. There are some applicants already, as I can say from Kim. I haven't seen anything yet, but she had them on Facebook. She's gonna do something to bring them out, so... But just think about how we're gonna do the hiring and the personnel committee and whatever.
We've been through this before, and one of the things is the information that people supply, you know, when they send a resume or whatnot. I look at that as, it's their information. Obviously, they sent it for us to review, but I don't think it's necessarily something you put out on the street. I guess it's a public document. I'm just thinking if we had a package of all of the applications and it was at town hall and it was up to each of us to go in and review and prepare ourselves about the candidates, that might be a good way to get the process going so that we look at them and you're gonna probably, depending on how many we get, might narrow it down to five that you actually interview. Usually the resumes help you pretty quickly sort that out.
As I recall, I think that's what we did last time. We had a folder on the table, and we went through and I believe each of us then read so that we came to an agreement of the ones we would ask for. That part worked out. Actually, so, you know, we'll get that happening when we get all the applications? We... I took it upon myself, captured Kim, Kim did it, and I okayed it. We did not have an application for employment in the files, there was none. So Kim went on the internet and found an application and printed it out, and it's a basic application and asks all the questions or whatever, so we do now have an application for a new hire.
I would guess we have one, it's a matter of where we're filed.
We couldn't find it, but that doesn't surprise me. The interim, we have... Today was the deadline of 3:00, I didn't check it, but there was one applicant, Amber Stevens, was interested in the interim job. She was gonna talk to... I talked to her on Saturday, I guess it was, last Saturday, and I told her, she wanted to know about the job, and I told her, and I said, "Why don't you go and, if you're interested, go see Kim on Monday and she can give you probably a better idea." And I said it was basically a couple of hours per week, filing, answering the emails, phone calls, taking minutes and those kind of things. So I don't know if we have any other applicants, and I'm not sure if she officially wants to do it, but there is, there could be a potential conflict because of Ivor working for the town, and I don't know how the board feels about that, but, you know, that's something that we have to make a decision on.
I wouldn't be particularly worried about a conflict at this time.
I wouldn't either, but I want to bring it up because it is...
But it is there.
It's there, we need to be...
I agree.
Worried about it, concerned about it, in a sense of aware of it, but, you know, I just remember a rotten stodder two and a half years ago now, just made it clear in a town of this size, these issues arise all the time. So we need to be aware of it. Not to guard it, but not to worry about it.
I have a question. What about number seven, hiring timeline? Then you started on the interim applications.
No, we did that, I told you. Alan said we're gonna have the applications and everybody gonna review them.
Well, it sounds like you're running those two together.
No.
Okay, okay, what's the hiring timeline?
That was, be prepared, how we're gonna handle the applicants when we find them.
How do you think you'd say what the deadline is?
Well, it's all right, I mean, you know, it's what I...
I thought there is a deadline.
There is. There is a deadline, and...
Okay, and that is?
I'm not sure, I think it's next week or the week after. I don't remember, we ran it for three weeks.
Got me totally confused, so that's okay.
That was the intent.
I'll just run it together, seven and eight.
So I'm not sure if we have, if Amber's really serious or not, but I will find out tomorrow. But it would be nice, I think she's done a good job, I think during the...
Discussion. Discussion.
Do you want to take a vote on that, if we want to do that?
No, I think we have to see who else applies, because there might be others.
Right, okay.
Who was posted?
I've only heard of the one.
Right, and unfortunately, I don't have, if there was anybody else. The only one I know of was Amber. So we can deal with that, I guess, tomorrow, if we have a special meeting as well. Okay, the meeting date changes. Well, let's, you know, let's do that now. Next... Monday, the first, is New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, so I don't think we're gonna have a meeting. So we'll push the meeting back to the second.
Probably August.
I'm sure that's okay. And then the next regular meeting comes a little bit sooner than we need to do the final for the town warrants and report and whatever. So the... Kim had asked if we could postpone that, so we would be the 20... I don't have a calendar in front of me, but it's the 20... It would be, instead of being on the 16th, we would do it on the 23rd.
15th, or 19th?
I mean, 15th. We would do it on the 23rd. No.
22nd.
22nd, yeah, 22nd. Because I think the deadline is the 25th, so if there's no objection, we'll just, that'll just happen. We all okay with that?
Yep.
All right, now the hydrants. Does that remember that Ivor Steeble was supposed to... We would ask him to do that as part of his services, so nobody's asked him, so... How do you want to proceed with this? There was no bid this year, nobody, he made... He just started plowing the snow.
Yeah, I think that's fine, I think he certainly is aware of what's going on and if he's currently taking care of snow at the town hall, I mean, it's...
Well, has anyone spoke to him?
No.
No, that's what I said. Because the Winter Foundation was typically doing it, but they came in the other day. They don't have the time or the manpower anymore to do it.
Well, they didn't hire anyone to play spring, did they?
No.
Aren't they obligated though with the agreement that they have?
Not really, we all defined ourselves.
Well, I think it's time to start sending them to the building for being hitched to them.
No, we voted to take them over, so...
It's really our responsibility, I mean, whether you like it or not, it's what happened when the town voted to do that.
Well, I'm just saying they're benefiting quite a bit off of being tied into the tavern with them, so they should, you know, they're benefiting more than most people in town with them, being hitched to the tavern, because they need it for their outcomes, you know, so...
No, I don't think so, I think it is a town responsibility and, I mean, they're... The tavern itself, yes, is tied into the hydrant system, but just through the pipe under the ground, so the hydrant that's on either side of the tavern protects, you know, any other private buildings on either side of the two, so...
So the tavern is sprinkled...
By the hydrants.
By the hydrants, but that's all plumbed up ahead of time, so it's not a matter of going and turning on the hydrant.
No, no, it's all there, 24 hours, 365. I'm not saying we shouldn't take care of it, shovel it.
I'm just saying they benefit quite a bit from it.
And the museum's also a part of it.
The museum is also a sprinkler system on the hydrant system.
Okay, public comment?
Joe, is anything happening with those two shacks on Hinkley Brook?
To be honest, I... It's on my list, Sam, but with everything going on, my personal life plus with Emily and all the budget, budget and everything else, I just have not done the research that's needed, but I will put it back on my list, I promise. Any other public comment? And do we have any new business to follow up? What about this forest thing?
We have a... We've already talked about it, and recently got an email with an agreement. It's just a matter of formality, but they never had... We never signed the agreement with Hayden, the forester, and what it's about is, it's a work agreement, it spells out the expectations of what he as the forester will do for the town and timeframes, that sort of thing, for the timber sale here on this...
Oh, just this one thing?
Yeah, that's what it's for. It's just... We've already talked about it.
It's in essence is what we talked about and agreed to, it's just in writing, so...
Just get the signature and tape, that's all.
Any approximate dates or anything on that, or...
As far as when...
Whatever he's gonna market or whatever he's gonna have.
Expectability on it, you know?
I mean, nothing in that, that's all I'm asking, if there's something in that.
All depends on the weather.
Do you want to take care of this, or should I just mail it to him? How do you want to handle this? I don't have a... I can do it, I can have it, I can mail it tomorrow.
In your mind.
No, we have, it must have it in the files somewhere. Okay, anything else? Thank you for all coming. We have an executive session now on personnel matter, so we shall...
Win an adjournment.
Win an adjournment, so we have a motion to adjourn and...